In a perfect world, will there still be a need for optimism?
Good. There you go.
Way to go guys, good job. Alright, so clerk can you call the roll please? Mike Wagner.
Here.
James Kurtman.
Here.
Gary Demashke.
Here.
Cindy Bydje.
Here.
Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
Perry Vashel. Yes. Great. I do approve of Paul Seem, please, voting for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Governor motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Oatings, Isaiah and Mike. Any changes? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yeah.
Mary Beth?
Yeah.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Governor motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of January fourteenth.
So. Second.
Was that Mike first and Gary, thank you. Any changes? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. No public input for tonight. I will just state, we do have Gary, Jordan, myself and Barb attended WASP this past week. It was very educational, which is why we're here. So we'll have to compare our notes and come up with a little descriptor of what we want to kind of report out to share with the board. Lots of good information and I'm always very excited to do that. In fact, I'll listen to Governor Evers. Alright, so we'll come back with that though. And then also, you know, we had been working on our board norms. We had come to a consensus, so I just wanna put those out there in the public. The first one, we will ensure a professional environment through active participation and listening. This will be accomplished by soliciting feedback at meetings, making it a point to ask all board members for their opinions and their feedback, and develop consensus on items. Everyone has had a chance to voice their opinion and discuss the topic. Ultimately, the will of the group is known and we are able to move on with the decision. The second one, we will remember that our ultimate goal is to support student learning outcomes. And finally, our third one will be, board members will participate in professional development opportunities. We are also a community of learners, so we do wanna share our knowledge when we come back, which is just like we did with our WASP. We do wanna come back and share the learning opportunities to grow as a collective understanding. So that will be certainly what we do here going forward. Anybody have any comments on that? I just wanted to get that all. Thank you, Jordan, for plugging that in. Alright. Everybody stay one, but let's get on to the rest of the business.
Yep, Liz, why don't you lead off for us before the computer falls asleep and we fail technology in a second.
Okay. So I wanted to share with you progress from sixth up to eighth grade on reading and math with Inspire. Inspire is a screener that we use and we only test the reading and math portion of it. And hopefully eventually we will move to also test that you won't show the signs. So this is our fall sixth grade Inspire score. You'll see that we were below benchmark in both reading and math with grade six. And with fifty-one students testing. And then the progress with text complexity I draw your attention to because our sixth goal is, our school commitment goal is related to increasing students' ability to read complex text. Because the more vocabulary and the more advanced some structures and knowledge that students gain through tech, complex text tends to increase their ability to read. So it's that more, the more you read, the more, the better you become at it. So we were at forty-nine percent, which is half of that class approximately, able to read or making progress with text complexity. So that was fall, which was September. And then this is the winter window. So we are still below benchmark in reading, but we did go up eight points. We're at one fifty-eight point nine. The actual benchmark is one fifty-nine, so we are within reach. The math benchmark went up and we're meeting it now. But I draw your attention then to the text complexity. We increased, six students increased their ability or increased their progress in with text complexity. So we had started our intervention model with the fall and one of the things we talked about was those students who we knew were struggling reading, we wanted to provide them with study skills and also reading strategies that would help them access more text. So some of these students in the fall were not, six of these students in the fall were not making progress with text complexity. So we moved six kids, which is actually quite remarkable because sometimes as kids age, it's very hard to increase their reading ability. And you'll see that math went up to one fifty-nine point five, which is a two-point gain for the cohort. And we moved up on the percentile rate nationally. Grade seven was below benchmark in reading in the fall, but they met the benchmark for math. Again, the text complexity sixty percent, so we had twenty-six students who were meeting the text complexity benchmark and seventeen who were not. So while we had an overall cohort gain of plus three kids and we were meeting the benchmark now for reading, we did not make as much progress with text complexity with subgrade. But we did increase with our math benchmark and the subs increased with national percentile rate. And then for eighth grade, which has historically been a strong class academically, this was their fall test score and you could see that they met the benchmarks for both reading and math. In fact, they were above the benchmark for reading is one fifty-nine and they were at one sixty-one point three. And the math benchmark is one sixty-two and they were at one sixty-three point one. So they, they were above and with seventy-five percent of them meeting that benchmark for text complexity. But I think this is interesting, is with reading, even though we have really, we have a really strong cohort, eighth grade, they're still meeting benchmark, held steady on their reading scores at one sixty-one, went up three to one sixty-six point two, but then you see we had a five student gain on the text complexity. So even though we held steady on the overall reading score, some of those underpining skills with kids improved. So it won't always impact that reading score or the average, but underneath it, what we're seeing is in eighth grade, more students are understanding complex text. So you're not gonna get a lot of movement necessarily, but I thought that was, it's a nice trend, because now we're down to eight students in eighth grade who struggle with text complexity.
Well, is it safe to say that this could pay off later on though?
Yeah. It will pay. So, and it just takes time, like you can't, you're not gonna see like test scores just go straight up like this. If you do, it's kind of suspect because, you know, is it that your cohort in the fall didn't take it seriously, scored low and then also jetted up because they took it seriously? The other thing too is you want slow and steady progress with change like this because you're actually changing instruction too. So, and you want that instruction to be changed over time gradually so that you can maintain that, those adjustments. Because if it's all based on like a certain, like a principal pushing or it's based on just certain teachers doing certain things, if that, if those people leave, then your score is plummet because they're not there anymore. So it's better to go up gradually and have a stable increase, but they're making progress. So what happens now with this data in combination with the test, the more specialized testing that we do for reading and math intervention, we looked at both of these and we identified, we identified the kids who we would call our nine-one-one kids, the ones that they need immediate help and they need one-on-one help to close some gaps. So our reading interventionist in our building, Amy Johnson, and then Kelly Crew, who's the district reading specialist, are doing one-on-one pull-out in this next intervention cycle to really work diligently, very targeted with a student one-on-one. So that's one of the first recommendations of the International Literacy Association or the Reading Association, is that you're gonna make the most progress with kids who struggle with reading if they get one-on-one tutoring. So most of our students are gonna be either in a one-on, the nine-one-one kids are gonna be on a one-on-one setting and then the next tier of students are gonna be in small groups of two or three. So we are narrowing how many kids we have to see, but we're also narrowing their gaps and we're intensifying their services here in this next cycle, yeah.
Does that include students of special education?
Yes.
Okay, disappears because I already know that pull-out kind of works.
Right, so we didn't, we did have some students who are in special education who are also receiving services, intervention services, but then because we had a decrease in regular ed kids who were needing services this cycle, we are able to pull in more special ed kids on this cycle and tag-team them with them getting instruction and support through their turn, support hour, but then they're also gonna have a pull-out time, twenty minutes, some of them like three days a week, others two days a week, and then some who are very needy are gonna get five days a week, they'll pull out. So. So we're making progress. I mean, when our achievement is really quite good and solid, so when you get to that level of achievement, making gains takes time and you're closing, you know, it's more intensive work to close those gaps, which is, so I was happy to see that we held steady with the benchmarks and that, or it had slight gains and that we were seeing some movement this year.
I just wanna kind of encapsulate this from my perspective real quick. If, if you're seeing scores, when you see scores academically, I mean, what I've always talked about is growth, is because unlike the business field, for example, we can't change our inputs, our raw material is our raw material, the students, but what we can have an impact on is growth. So what's encouraging to me though, is our input in this case, the students in the fall and now once again here in the winter, their achievement, their results are quite good, remarkable in many cases, to be honest. On top of that, not only are they achieving at a very high level, we're still seeing growth, which Liz mentioned a few times, to be high achievers and to still see growth, that is very hard. When you see national norms, the higher the score gets, the projected growth shrinks. So this is really a testament to some good things going on and what excites me is to hear what's going on with kind of a systematic approach to how we're working with students. I, I don't know too much history, but I know recent history, that would not have been what we were doing for our students at the middle school level. So that level of service is certainly an improvement and there are a lot of ways to measure success in school, but I think we can all agree, one of the, at least most public ways we're viewed is that how we perform on the ACT. So the hope is that this work is supporting students, so when they are juniors, they perform well in the ACT, because as I always say, that, that has life-altering consequences. Whether we agree with it or not, the facts are, that opens doors and closes doors. So I just wanted to share that because if, if you were to walk away from this with any message, it is, not only are we seeing growth, but we're achieving at a pretty high level. So if we can continue that trajectory with these students, that will bode very well in a couple of years for them, most importantly, and for us as a district. Eighty-second percentile for the class. That's unusual. When these scores are based on millions of students, you would assume like, yeah, fiftieth percentile, we're normal.
Yep.
So just for context, no, that class's scoring abnormally well. Sorry Liz, I couldn't assist.
Well, and I like how it's broken down into a skill, so, so when we talk to the public about it, we're teaching to a skill, rather than just to the test. Because I think that's always something that gets lost within some of these standardized tests is, you know, are we teaching to the test? Is that really being a goal, or are we teaching actual skills? This breaks it down as an actual skill. I think it's important though.
And that's teaching, like the idea of people who consider teaching to the test, that's usually practically, test prep is usually teaching to the test. But like when you teach and you keep in mind that kids need to read complex texts, you are teaching to the test because the test measures how well they can read complex texts and you want them to do well in that. It's kind of like when you take your driver's test, you take the written portion, you wanna know what they're gonna ask you. Will they tell you exactly what they're gonna ask you? That's what you study. And the same with the behind-the-wheel portion, you wanna know how they're gonna evaluate you. So when we teach with skills in mind, that high-level skills, it's more than just the test, it's their life. What are the skills they're gonna take to life? So I'm pleased to meet you. We're, we're meeting benchmarks and things are improving, slow and steady then through.
Is there anything else in your report that you wanted to use the computer for?
Uh, no. Unless you wanna look at schedules.
I don't, I don't love the board reports.
Really?
I've seen it a few times.
I know.
I was pretty amped to see the schedules. I don't know about anybody else.
My children get very amped about schedules. So, no, I mean, it's been busy in middle school and high school, a lot of, like the schedules all came out of committee work, both for PLC and for the revision to the regular bell schedule. And when we were changing the bell schedule and looking at a four-minute passing time, most districts, a significant number of districts in the state have a backpack policy, like the one we have, or we're adopting for next year. So, yeah, you would think I was taking their firstborn child.
Yeah, we heard a lot about that.
Yes. Wow, you have an unlikely attachment to that. Some of us love to carry nothing. So, you know, it'll be, it'll be a challenge, but we'll make adjustments and I'm happy that. One of the student council members remarks me like, well, the Wednesday morning, eight-fifteen start kind of makes up for the backpack. I can sleep in for an extra half hour. Okay, several students email me and say, so on Wednesdays, do we really need to be here at seven forty-five or like what time do we really need to be there? Eight fifteen is when you really need to be here. So they're starting to get it. And then that, the career speaker series, which was forwarded last week and I'm, you know, keeping my fingers crossed for this week, but I have a feeling.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Kids have been real receptive to that too and they're signing up and interested in talking about the different career pathways that people have taken. So it's been a busy, it was a busy December, January, middle school, high school, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, like Liz? Matt, you wanna just jump in front so we can stay here for a couple more minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
We're all comfortable, so. Why don't you get uncomfortable?
It's like, uh, you need to restart your computer.
Oh, we got some time.
Oh, we got ninety minutes.
Ninety, plenty of time. This always happens. I think Scott's sitting in his office like hunking here right now.
Alright, I just wanted to highlight, so the PD presentations on the twenty-first, the first two, Broke Mindset, Mindfulness, Nurture Heart, they were presented, so it was a combination of people services people and regular ed people and I think when that happens, that is often more powerful because then you have people joining forces and it's not just, you know, Aubrey as a counselor talking about nurture heart, it's a kindergarten teacher and a counselor, so I think that's, I think that's powerful when things get presented together. And then the other ones were terrific, classroom frame reading strategy, which I was commenting to Jordan, I saw the very next day that teachers were implementing the frame reading strategy, so that's, that's always a good thing where you have a PD and you have teachers that say, yep, I can use that and I'm implementing it and then it appears in classrooms the very next day. Web page construction is still going strong and then Skyward and technology.
Can you define strong? Yeah, I was just, great question.
Can I define strong?
How are the webpages actually coming along?
So the ones that I have seen are very good and when I think of like our school psychologist, so I'm just, I'm looking at people services and special ed. Now, how much they're being accessed, that, I'm not sure. There is a way that you can see how many hits. At the elementary, I know elementary is using Class Dojo a lot and some of the webpages, I think at elementary are referring to Class Dojo.
So at this point, nearly everybody, and I guess that nearly everybody literally is off the ground and has something going, not all of them are published yet, we're working on that, but I'll just say, you know, relative to that piece, twofold, number one, I understand the board's desire, the community's desire, quite frankly, my desire as well, that we need to have a bit more of an online presence. Our survey data from last year with the staff indicated that, yes, sixty-two percent of our staff did not have an online presence with regards to school. So we identify that as an area of growth and I do think the progress is being made and my hope is in addition to that, then this is a gateway to other advancements that we'll make with technology, not just the webpage, but this is kind of a step into the door so we can do some other things as well.
The ones that have been published though, we haven't made it public, so like, go check out my website, or have we?
I wouldn't say like, we as in like me or like Facebook or something like that from the district, no, just because the, the number of them that have been published, I didn't feel it was to a threshold where I wanted to draw extra attention to the fact that many of them are not.
Right.
When we get to that point, I think, yes, some sort of, as a reminder or, you know, whatever, some public attention drawing will be good at that point.
So you think that's maybe a goal for next year?
No, I think that's still within reach for this year because the message at InService last week was, if you are not complete, you need to use time to do that. Because, you know, we're, we understand that this will be something that could just be a slow painful process for years if we don't set a firm deadline at some point, so we're starting to flirt with that.
And does everyone have the same like standards? You know, did he kind of set?
There will be certain benchmarks, yes. I mean, minimum expectations, yes.
So the ones that have been published aren't necessarily, I mean, it's, it's still a little discombobulated as far as if some aren't published, it's not like you can start setting expectations of, you know, post this or at least twice this week do this, I mean, right? Like I'm just, we haven't actually implemented a formal process.
Going into it, I mean, they were told repeatedly that your website is to include learning targets.
So you're looking for like updates and stuff?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we're talking about this, but if, if a hundred percent of people aren't formally published, then we can't really say this is like our new implementation and now we can start, in so many words, like checking to see if people are actually utilizing it right and maintaining and, right. So it's still a little soft opening feel to it where we shouldn't have really high expectations of.
Well, and my question is, it's like, if we're putting this on the plate, what are we taking off? We can't just keep piling on. We have to be mindful about what we're doing. So they're busy enough as is, so. But I get, I mean, if they're using Class Dojo or something like that, I get it.
Sorry, this was not formally directed.
You, you used the word soft opening and I think that's actually a good way to think about it, as kind of a soft opening. People, people are at different stages, so even, even in the group that was there developing their websites during that staff development activity, people had different comfort levels and, and some people were requiring a little bit more time from, from Dan and Scott on that day and other people, you know, they got the hang of it and they were, they were moving and they were actually grade level teams in one, in one area that were, what I would say is refining an already very good product.
Good.
So, yeah, soft opening would be a good way to, good way to think about it.
I think it would make it easier on you, the admin team, if there was some formality to it. I mean, if, if we're striving for consistency, then I think there has to be, I mean, I agree with you, Isaiah, you can't, you know, reach for the stars on this, but at some point there has to be some baseline expectations of what goes on there where then it makes it easy to, for the admin team to follow up and clearly see, hey, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, we need more of this from you. Otherwise, it, it falls into that, well, my teacher last year was really good at it and I really liked that, but this year they sn- you know, I mean, we have to find some level of consistency of baseline.
But I think that, you know, I think that the ultimate goal of this is to make things more efficient. And, and I think that they'll get there and I think that it's one of those things where it has to, some, they have to find an efficiency use for it and when they find an efficiency use for it, then it'll just take off. Then it becomes that communication piece where you're not calling or doing whatever like, until that point.
It's a transition, yeah.
Until that point, I don't think putting hard deadlines and things like that are gonna be helpful, but I get what you're saying.
But I think that was my point then, it's like, okay, then really let's roll this out next school year and that way it can be like, hey, everybody has their webpages, look, everything's on, you know, I mean, it doesn't have the hit if you're like, hey, look, check these out and then one, you know, one class has a grade and the other doesn't. I don't think that's what we're going for. So maybe rather than even just throwing it out there in the coming months would be the best, until there's some formality to the plan. And come up with like a plan of attack, maybe like that calendar of events or something and just, just so we have that information.
I was supposed to meet with Scott on Wednesday, IT Scott, and clarify, as a part of our every two-week meeting and when we meet, we always go through the stats, how many are under construction, how many are published, and then I bring that back to the admin team and then we have that discussion. So I mean, this, this hasn't been lost in the weeds, it just hasn't been for lack of wanting to just put a thumb on people, to respect the time thing, but at the same time, help them understand that this, like, this isn't going to be something that if we just persist in our tardiness, it's just gonna go away. Cause it can't become that either. So, but yes, I will make sure that I, I do that and can follow up with, absolutely.
And not be anywhere we're at.
Yep, will do.
Yeah, no, and then thinking a lot, even in relation to, there, there are always gonna be differences between teachers and when I think of like Dan Jurgens, that is, that is talking about flipped classrooms and posting videos of certain lessons and even certain experiments. and even certain experiments above, you know, this is, this is the first part of this experiment. And here's a video that you can watch or review if you didn't get it. You know, that could be posted on a website for someone like Dan Jurgens. That might not be the same for, for other teachers.
Sure.
There are always gonna be teachers who are going to be towards the, the high end of the technology curve. And there's gonna be some teachers who are gonna be towards the low, lower end. But setting minimum expectations to make sure that we have, you know, people nudged in the direction of where we want that, that people to communicate. Any other questions on the, on the PD? And then post-secondary transition, so we got nine thousand dollars from the transition incentive grant. And what that means is that the, the students who were surveyed, so the, the sixteen seventeen grads, part of the, the transition measurement for students with disabilities is there's a survey that is conducted by, a DPI pays for it, it's usually, it's usually out of St. Norbert that they pay. And they are asked, so the graduates, sixteen seventeen graduates were asked questions in the summer. Basically, are you enrolled in college, are you employed, are you the combination of the two? Or are you enrolled in military or some other training? And out of the graduates, so thirteen, we had thirteen exitters. So that includes our eighteen to twenty-one. And then eleven responded. And out of those eleven, nine, if you look all the way over to the right, if you guys can see that, nine were, were answering those questions positively. So out of those nine, we got a thousand dollars per student. For those nine students doing something productive, as I call it. And then finally, and it's related to this, so DVR, which is basically vocational reification, works with our students. And Tracy Paul, Chris Paul, and Heather Schamber are hosting a DVR information session on February twelfth at two o'clock. And if you're, if you're available, you certainly can come if you're interested in learning more about DVR to the People Services Conference Room. Any questions about the transition stuff? And then on the other end of the spectrum, we have the Child Development Fair, which is February eighteenth. From one to six thirty, which is a really good tradition. So we, that's our, that qualifies as our child, child find, so identifying any students with disabilities living within our school district. And we combine it with the four K Child Development Fair. So you're not just screening kids who might be, that parents might have concerns about. You're looking at any student in that age range that parents are open and available. We schedule them and last year, the, the reviews, the people who filled out evaluations were, were tremendously positive. So it's a good, continuing a good tradition, I think this is the third annual. And there's a four K open house as well during that time. That's all I have.
Not busy either.
No, not busy at all.
Go on.
We might have just established a new norm for the board meeting presentations tonight.
I do like this section.
You do.
Okay. Mine's not really exciting in terms of the aesthetics of it all. Couple themes I wanted to touch on real quick though. Last meeting was when we approved the resolution for the operational referendum. So it's been very busy between attorneys and calling people and talking to people and everything else and making sure that we have everything ready. But I did have personal communication with both Ashley Vanish and Blackard, your junior and Azel, just talking about kind of where we're at. Extending the olive branch if they wanted to come meet or if they had people that come to their offices and talk highly of the school district, which I'm sure happens all the time. I would be more than happy to talk to those people, meet with those people, whatever. Great conversations when I explain kind of our rationale, which I hope this is the theme that projects forward for two months. Once you have a chance to explain the rationale, everyone, oh, I get it, that makes sense, that sounds good for our community, good for our school. But I just wanna talk about those. And then Heidi Feller from Social Schools for EDU. We're doing coaching for Bev Whalen, who does our social media. She gets some coaching through social media for EDU. And Heidi and I have had a few conversations just talking about a communication plan relative to the referendum. And I put together a draft and then we went through it together when we talked to the phone. And what Heidi does, or part of what she does for that group, is when their client schools are going to referendum, she is the referendum specialist. So a good resource for us to have access to because of our coaching contract with him. And I was pleased that she, she gave our communication plan a thumbs up, so that, that's a good thing. Actually worked on my newsletter article today for the February newsletter, which will talk about the referendum. The informational flyer that you've seen previously. We'll see what happens with the weather this week. We were, that's sitting in envelopes and we wanted to get it labeled and out this week. That'll be going out soon, that's ready to go. But I'm really looking forward to that stuff and I do think we've got good information to share and we just need to be consistent and be honest, so. The tech committee, interesting that I highlighted this and then we just had that conversation where we bird walked a little bit and talked about webpages. But I just wanna plant a seed, and we could dialogue for forever tonight, but we're not gonna solve the problem tonight or answer the question. But I wanna plant a seed with the board because I do think this is important. You're connected to the community and that's part of your responsibility. What do we want, what do we see our community wanting in terms of technology? Because I will just tell you, having sat through these tech committee meetings now for a year and a half, if there is one area that I don't feel overly confident that we have a strong vision as a district, it's with regards to technology. Within that committee, between teachers, between our IT staff, there's just a lot of uncertainty. And I know what I experienced in the past as a principal, I know what other places are doing. But I guess I, I'm seriously putting it out there to the board. And something that maybe, as I looked at our committees, I mean, I guess curriculum is probably where the committee level would best fit. If we wanna have the dialogue as a whole board, we could even just put it on like the next agenda or something. What is our vision? Because I guess there's the, do we have a desire to be a one-to-one school? I don't know. We've all seen that as principals and curriculum directors and whatever. But I guess that's one area where I would be curious to generate a little more dialogue with the board. Because, like I said, I'll be honest, at the committee level internally, that is one place where there is not a lot of direction. And unless I just impose my will, I don't see a lot of direction, so I would like some feedback from you.
Do you think there's a lack of direction because there's a gap between people that generally don't use technology and then those that do? I mean, if sixty-two percent don't have an online presence, I wouldn't think there's an overwhelming majority that say, hey, let's, let's go towards technology, one-on-one.
I would say that's a fair statement. So knowing if we went one-to-one, staff development, development, excuse me, and training would have to be a huge part of it or else they're gonna become pretty expensive paperweights.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is part of it. But then on one hand, even within that committee, you have people that are very adamant that we should use and get it in students' hands as much as possible. And then others that think like, that status quo is okay.
Well, and I think that's why I had the reaction about the websites, because it's like, if we're going in that direction, then it's almost to an extent, you, you can't excuse people's lack of savviness. I mean, yes, I understand you're not comfortable with it, but you can't figure out a website and uploading some interactional stuff you did this week or documents or, you know, how are we gonna ask of you to, you know, structure your curriculum around technology? So as uncomfortable as it is and that's, that's a tough conversation, but, you know, if, if you can't get everybody on board with the website, that's, that's tough.
One of the things I think would be very interesting to do is to really ask the staff, okay, of those sixty-two percent that didn't have an online presence, is it because you just didn't do it or cause you didn't want to or, you know, I guess, or is it like, yeah, is it like a skill, is it like a need? Or what is it? And then, you know, if we truly show you, okay, this is what we want, like, have your weekly lesson planned so that students know when they're expected to have their test this week, you know, is that useful? You know, hopefully, we're not gonna, we don't wanna take stuff away from them, cause, you know, yes, it is another thing. But hopefully, in the long run, this will help them meet needs for their children, cause then they won't have to be having kids run up to them a hundred times a day asking, oh, well, what's due, when is this due, and all those kinds of things. So really kinda studying the reasons, like why we want it, and why we think it's important.
I think personally, I just, I feel like if, if I get the sense from the board that at the district level, we feel that to our community, the people that we answer to per se, that this is something that we really want to see develop and develop rather quickly, well then digging in and getting that more qualitative data about the why, so that we can form our next steps, I think to me, that would be how I see this progressing. Because, yeah, there, to me, there's certainly a gap between knowledge and what we're looking for possibly.
But I think you hit it as far as saying, what is the vision? And we, as a board, have an obligation to set that. And so regardless, again, if people are uncomfortable with it, we have to bear the burden of saying, no, listen, this is the direction we wanna go and we're challenging everybody to get on board with this. And, yeah, it's gonna be tough, but again, this is, this is our vision, this is where we wanna take it. So hop on, you know?
Well, I agree with you, but then it gets back to what Isaiah said, that wants the trade-off. Because right now, it's just an added responsibility, it's, it's a lot for them.
That's a part, I mean, I think that's a part of the transition process, but if you continually look at it like that, that's, that's how status quo happen. I mean, if it's always the undertaking of a change and transition is, is overbearing, then that's, that's how it doesn't happen, you know?
So I think we circle this back, next meeting with some stems to generate some conversation. So we, the board, you can kind of feel that out a little bit and then we go from there. Because the timing is good with the webpage thing and just, like I said, my feeling with our internal committee that this is one where we either need to say we're cool with where it is right now or we need to turn the page and kind of rip off the band-aid and, and go, that's how I feel.
Do you think you need board representation on the tech committee, like more of it, or?
I admire your willingness.
What's the struggle? What can help the struggle?
Yeah, no, I, I think let's, let's get some direction from here and then we can push it back to that group because it's just kind of a, yeah.
So it, it's more or less just needing direction, not necessarily?
Yeah.
People might not buy into it, but it's just a?
Well, but you gotta remember, this really does transform the entire way you teach a curriculum.
Totally, yeah.
And, and that takes a lot of time to do. Not necessarily just a, like, not necessarily just a lot of time, but it takes a lot of people training.
Well, you're wrapping your brain around something totally different.
Right. At the end, like, I have, I do a lot of my own, my teaching through Paradek and stuff like that. And then I have a lot of formative and supportive assessments just online.
Right.
So it grades it like that. Those are efficiencies I felt, but it's also taken me a long time to get it there. So, like, this would be something that if we're even looking about rolling out, it's gonna be three years down the line.
Sure, yeah.
So.
But I think just to have that, that vision in mind, that's where we need to get.
And I think that's the, you're gonna answer, the committee's kind of like, well, we can't, right. We can't be the ones to, yeah.
I have a lot of meetings in my life, all day, every day, and these are the most painful meetings I've participated in. I'll just say it and I know what you're talking about.
Jordan, has there been some effort to survey staff as to, I mean, I think we've heard that.
We did a very substantial survey lab and we have pages of data around technology and usage. I mean, if we really wanted to play with that, we could lose ourselves in that data.
Sure, sure.
So, and some of that may answer some of these questions, I just can't remember it well enough off the top of my head.
Sure.
But, yeah, we have a lot of data.
It's a good place to start, I mean, it's one thing to not have the knowledge, but it's another thing to not see the importance as well. And there are two different kind of monsters right there, but just to get a better idea of where staff is and, and what are their feelings.
I'm gonna share a copy of that with everyone and you can peruse it.
That'd be sweet.
Anything else on that topic for now?
I think for now, it's good.
Okay, and then last, I just wanna quickly touch on the state convention. I guess I'll just say, having been there, overarching theme is the notion to me was educational equity. Opportunities, and not just opportunities, but kind of a guarantee, I guess, that that's important caveat there. We're not just providing an opportunity, we're, we're kind of guaranteeing that we are going to do whatever it takes to try to help all kids, irregardless of their background and how they're coming to us. And understanding that they come to us with very different stories, some of which we have no idea. And that impacts them. So to just live in this black and white world of you do this when I say this, that, that's probably not the smartest world to be in. If I had to try to uncaps, particularly the keynotes. Equity was what ran through my veins when I listened to the keynotes. So to that end, it was nice that we're working with the Dane County Consortium on equity and trying to do some things. I mean, that's a first step, we have a long ways to go. Our school improvement plan speaks to educational outcomes for underrepresented populations. So those wheels are turning, but just know that Wisconsin Heights is not alone because that's the message that four hundred and twenty school districts heard at the state convention. And then funding wise, I, I just wanna say, yes, Tony Hevers did talk, Governor Hevers did talk. He wants to try to, you know, do everything he can to advocate for what he's presented. There's been this Blue Ribbon Commission on Funding, which has been around for about a year now, did a lot of work. I went to their session, was anyone else in that room? It was Pat that couldn't find anybody else.
We wanted to be happy, we went to the happiness.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I just go to the policy and money words. But the Blue Ribbon Commission, really what they said, and, and they're very pro-education. They said they understand where Tony's at, but the notion that things are going to be like Tony wants in terms of how much money, that much money does not exist. So where are we gonna end up? Probably somewhere in the middle. But here were things that they are really advocating for and there does appear to be bipartisan support. Some sort of inflationary based increase for school districts. It used to be that way, that went away once upon a time. They're talking about trying to bring that back. So state funding to the district would be tied at a minimum to an inflationary based increase. Special ed funding, that has a lot of traction to improve special ed funding. Right now, I think it's roughly twenty-four to twenty-five percent. The talk is like a two-year phase in to around thirty-three percent. We'll see. And then the other thing that there's a lot of support for is declining enrollment support, which rewind six, seven years ago, we'd have been huge benefactors. Now that our enrollment is stabilized and is now projecting to go up a little bit, I, I don't see that positively impacting Wisconsin Heights. But then even just to go back to some of the skeptics regarding the referendum and forecasting, even if they are able to do these things with bipartisan support relative to inflationary increases in special ed. Even if they are able to do these things with bipartisan support relative to inflationary increases in special ed funding. The dollars we're talking about are a couple hundred thousand dollars. So just to go back to the notion of like our problems are gonna be solved by this new budget. No, they're not. Is it going to help us? Of course, but it's not going to solve a two-point-two million dollar deficit. But the good news is there's divided government and this Blue Ribbon Commission does seem to have support on both sides of the aisle. So perhaps progress in that area. Any questions on that? And, and there's not, I, things could change quickly. But there's, there's a lot of apprehension as to when the budget is even gonna be finalized. There are some that are predicting this could be another October budget, so.
Mr. John Forster said in this session I attended, I wouldn't be surprised if we got the budget in June. And I wouldn't be surprised if we got the budget in October.
Yeah, and I, I think that's pretty much what everyone's saying at this point is, either way, it wouldn't be shocking that it was rather quick or a very painful process. Any questions? Alright. Come back down.
We can't stay.
Yeah. I told you.
Alright, let's go through these. So what committee are you part? So the district business.
I do five, one, two, six, three.
Um, so. Well, we'd like to do, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, so so for five, one.
Okay, grab a second.
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions?
That was Isaiah.
Isaiah.
Yep.
Alright, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary? And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to accept the nineteen-twenty open enrollment caps for regular and special ed students?
Second.
James and Isaiah, were there any questions on how they were counted to be, or any questions on? Thanks for putting that together. Alright, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the, the part-time enrollment at, open enrollment as per policy five-one-one-three-point-zero-one? I, well, I'm closer to Isaiah, so I heard it first.
Isaiah and Mike?
Yes.
Okay, try Mike, try.
Alright, any questions on this?
I have a question.
Yes.
How often does this happen in or out?
A part-time, yeah, a part-time.
Part-time, not a lot. Just, I told Cindy before she asked, as per state statute one-eighteen-point-five-two, we need to have something in place to deal with part-time open enrollment. In this case, our policy has just been updated and is legal and to me, that's how we deal with part-time open enrollment, just through our policy, so. But the notion of how often does it happen, not very often. This is one thing that's, it's relatively new in the present wording. It's something that the state is trying to promote more, so perhaps in the future it will become more popular. Because they're all about trying to provide school choice opportunities for kids.
An example, how that works?
I decided I wanna take a course at Middleton, so the part-time.
Something we don't offer.
Something we don't offer. So you don't, you're not gonna formally open enroll, but part-time, you're gonna open enroll because you wanna take a class that we do not offer. But you're not gonna take it at the university level, you're gonna take it at the high school level.
So is this, is this different than the homeschool kids coming in for band or something else?
Yep, this would be district to district.
Does this pursue like youth options if we, cause youth options, is there a different cost for this versus youth options?
This would be something that we have to work out an agreement with the specific school district.
Okay, I just.
Cost of options in terms of, yeah, they would set the price basically.
So if we had kids, I ask for courses other than, I know occasionally they'll ask for university courses, sometimes they ask for other school district.
I am not aware that we have any students.
We don't have any students right now. I know a couple of kids have talked to Mr. Juan about potentially the Project Lead the Way courses and Middleton Cross Plains for engineering. So. But I'm not sure, you know, part of that following through a bit too is the transportation issue, because the transportation is on the kid. And then making it work with their schedule here, so they may sign up for it, but then when, when you have to actually physically schedule that and then make it work. Sometimes that's daunting for kids too, so.
How are they finding out about options like this, or what's the pipeline, what's the?
We have an agreement with Middleton Cross Plains, Project Lead the Way classes that we can have kids access them. And they just talk, you know, but they are friends with people in different districts and, and see different opportunities.
Part of our annual notice too does, the annual notice is that big packet of all of these things that people probably don't read also. Does refer to open enrollment, part-time open enrollment. The course options, which used to be youth options, recamp, and that was a part of the annual notice that called as well.
And yeah, the Project Lead the Way classes are in the Wisconsin Heights, uh, high school course descriptions. But what this opens up is that if someone's gonna take the Project Lead the Way, they could all, at a certain time of the day, they might be able to take a. A language class at Middleton, so they don't have to come back to Wisconsin Heights for a language class, so they could, they could do that. Cause I, yeah, I was talking to, to Mr. as well. Cause he said that it's like fifteen hundred dollars or something, that there's an agreement between Wisconsin Heights and Middleton for the Project Lead the Way classes. But this opens up an opportunity, so it could help some students with, with logistics.
Or if a student moves into the district and wants to finish a class, where'd they ask?
Yes.
Possibly.
Anything else? Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary? Last one, do I have a motion to approve the ecology class trip to Yosemite National Park and Seymour Marine Center in April eighteen to twenty-three?
So, I'll second.
Thanks, guys. Such a neat group, I'm glad that this thing.
It was hard to beat Isaiah.
Yeah.
It's all your words.
Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. I do wanna just point out the March dates for the eleventh, we will be at Blackheart Elementary for a special referendum presentation. And the eighteenth, we will be in Maisel for the same presentation, so anybody can come join us.
Both of those dates are in the February newsletter, both of those dates will be in the flyer that we'll get in there as well.
Hey, Mike, I'd like to make a motion to your.
Well. Alright, well, get you objections?
I got you.
Oh, Mike?
Yes.
James? James, you ready to go? Mary Beth?
Or Barb?
And Barb, Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.